Items for discussion tonight, the 2010 work plan. Matt, do you have particular...
Yes, sir. Thanks. So, as we did earlier this year for the 2009 work plan, the board's requested work plans from each of the advisory committees and commissions for the upcoming year. And we plan on having those for consideration of the board at their December 14 meeting for them to review and comment on. So, this is... So, I thought we'd just address it at this meeting, and that way we have a little bit of time. We've got one more meeting before that if we needed to come back with it. And what I did is I just listed three items that I thought made sense, and then left it open for the commission to direct as far as what, any additional items or deletions you would like to see in the plan. And the three items I had were, of course, completion of the review of our Chapter 16.
I thought we were going to get that done in...
(laughing). Well, you know...
That was a big one.
It's getting there. It's getting on its way. And then we'll have some green building standards for commercial buildings that there's been a county consortium of cities and the county that's worked together to come up with a template for green build codes for commercial buildings, which will be coming forward in the near future, and then kind of standard language with regard to capital improvement projects.
Remind me again, was there... What other items were on the 2009 work plan? Did we... Was there anything else we didn't complete?
We had on there... We had language in there about the 76th Street properties.
Yes.
And then 76th Street properties, residential green build codes, self-sustainability plan for the town, energy self-sustainability plan that we...
That was on our work plan?
Yeah.
I don't remember that at all.
It was just simple language as far as review, the plan, and comment.
We did that.
Yeah, we did that.
Solar, that was the solar panels.
Well, we did that, but regarding the 76th Street...
We didn't do that.
We didn't do that, and we already have heard two different things come forward on 76th Street without... And I think that's been part of the confusion on 76th Street is neither the planning commission nor the trustees have ever viewed that as in even a simple area plan.
Right. And what's the second item?
There was the... Was it the Huntsman property? Wait, which one? There's Guardian...
Right.
And then there was a property directly north.
All right. That was a concept plan, and it hasn't come forward since that point yet.
Okay. But suffice it to say, there was enough public... Yeah, public activity and comment on it that it is too bad we didn't actually do that one because I don't know where else you have a parcel of that size, and you do absolutely no discussion before you start hearing different pieces come into play. So, I thought that was kind of... Didn't make sense. So, we didn't do it. And so, it's going to be catch as catch can.
Right. Okay. Suggestions, comments, or suggestions regarding the work plan?
We want to have the 76th Street parcel of the 2010 work plan and do it.
Catch up.
I mean, Guardian's there, but I mean, there's...
Other...
Other things to consider.
Yeah?
Put that on.
I think we should still keep that in our scope of discussion rather than have yet another thing come in that it's like, well, does it fit with any larger concept of what that 40 or so acres would be in total? You know, it's got kind of a different zoning than most places. It's got its features because it kind of gets a little landlocked up there and...
I think that's really where we should put the auto dealerships in town.
I think that would be fine, too.
And the body shops next to the storage place.
Someone looking to move there?
We just built... Put some homes next to the junkyard, so we should put some homes...
Oh, there you go.
Next to the storage place. We have homes against the storage.
Yeah, there you go. We've already built that model.
We really need homes next to, you know, high air pollutant kind of chemical use. So, if not a Dow Chemical plant, then at least a body shop.
A body shop.
Yes. You can't.
Okay. Other suggestions?
So, you know... Sorry, Bob, go ahead.
Good, no good. What about... Well, we have a couple parcels that are sort of being talked about. We have one over next to Broomfield that there's been sort of a concept plan thrown out there just so they could get some feedback. I don't know whether we want to take a look at that. And also the Town Center that's continuing to be developed and probably... I mean, I wouldn't mind getting briefed on the latest, what might be going on with the Town Center, maybe keeping that in our focus for next year.
What are you calling the Town Center, that?
Yeah. And then ConocoPhillips has announced their 2013 plans, and I think that for the size of development that's going that close to Superior, we ought to be thinking really hard about what we do and how we do it and how we plan for it. I mean, if they're truly bringing in the number of people they say they are, then I mean, they're going to need a lot of places to live.
1.2 million square feet.
Yep. And so...
So far, they've got a rec center and a helipad and a hotel.
Nowhere for people to live. Well, the hotel. So, I think, you know, having those on our radar and maybe if we need to have feller meetings, getting briefed on what's going on with ConocoPhillips, what's going on with the Town Center, maybe even have some discussions about what we think is important in our town as relates to the impacts of ConocoPhillips for all plans.
I think that's ConocoPhillips' issues and really good suggestion.
You know, which brings back to mind the idea of a road between... I'm going to kill for this one, but between 88th Street and McCaslin along 36th, sort of a frontage road.
The Coal Creek, oh, yeah. Or the Coal Creek through.
Well, no, there's already an access for that commercial property. That property along to the west of the bridge where that detention pond is, right?
Those areas?
Yeah, right. It's already zoned commercial. So, and so there's already an access to get in there. But, you know, the idea that folks could, you know, have another option besides the Flatiron's Mall isn't a bad one.
No, I mean, I think... I really think we need to be taking that very seriously. I mean, we sort of need to be right there with ConocoPhillips. I don't think we need to get ahead of them, and I don't think we want to be two years behind. I mean, you've got Broomfield sitting there, just... They're already on it. I mean, in fact, they were in the paper before Lewisville was announcing what ConocoPhillips was going to do. So, you know, I mean, I just think it would...
There's also, you know, in terms of places to live, there's all that condo apartment stuff going on on the other side of 95th Street.
Yeah, on the Broomfield side.
But Superior is the 13th place, best place in the country to live.
Yeah, I'm right there with you. So, and I think, you know, I'd like to put back on this work plan, the economic development plan that we were told we're not supposed to do, and somebody else would do, and nobody's done.
I think that falls right in there with ConocoPhillips at Town Center, and yeah, I would agree.
You know, just as a... Just doesn't matter, of course. I mean, you know, we have all these, you know, we've got the 76th Street 40 acres, we've got the thing over by... That Bob was just talking about over by the...
On the other side of Horizon.
Colton Road, yeah. We've got this whole thing, but I mean, what are we going to... Let's... It would seem that a plan is in order, and since theoretically we're the planning commission. I'd also like to suggest that we, you know, this kind of jumps into tonight's discussion. There's some discussion of removing the parts of the code that talk about the planning commission or review capital development projects for the town. And I think that's a bad idea. I think removing that language is not...
Yeah, we'll look into that.
The planning commission should insert... Well, that should be part of our work plan, though, is...
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to include it if that's the consensus of...
Right, that part, right there that's already there.
Yeah, that one to look there.
Okay.
Right. And with that, that piece, the economic development piece went to the board last year, and they removed it, but that doesn't mean we can't propose it again this year.
Well, I mean...
They removed it and did nothing with it.
Right, they removed it and did nothing. You know, and so here a whole nother year's gone by, and not that it's easy to develop anything commercially these days, but, you know, what is the plan, and who do we want, and, you know, what efforts can we make to attract those people, you know? And if that's happening and we're not pretty to it, then great, maybe somebody could let us know. But in the meantime, we spend a lot of weeks with not much to do.
But with the land use code, I think we've been pretty busy.
True. So, the suggestion so far to continue or 76th Street, the Town Center, and maybe ConocoPhillips in some ways is sort of all-encompassing in relation to what's going on in the adjacent communities. These... All these things sort of tie together with, you know, what's going on across the highway as well as the economic development piece. So...
And is there an opportunity to have some sort of cooperative discussion with Lewisville's planning commission? I don't know.
Yeah, the other committees are trying to take that approach. I mean, the other space advisory committee's met with Broomfield, we've met with Lewisville.
Well, there's certainly going to be an impact to the town of Superior from other development, right?
Right. Bear in mind that at its height, Storage Tech was employing about 3,000 to 4,000 people at that site. So, to add another 3,000, it's not the hugest impact, but it would certainly be nice to do some cohesive discussion, you know, instead of...
Well, it's not just the 3,000, it's the thousands that are going to be coming through for training on an annual basis and this rotation of people. And so, rather than have ConocoPhillips be an impact on Superior, it'd be nice to have Superior be ready for...
Well, I think we're...
You know, positioned to support that.
We're foolish to think, too, that the adjacent... The properties adjacent to residence... Current residential construction won't have serious public input into what's going to happen next to them. I mean, you can see it just from the few projects we've even talked about this year that the neighbors were extremely vocal about what they wanted to see, and if you're going to develop Zareus or... What's the... Is it Menkeck? Bill Menkeck?
Well, the Spicer Cross.
Spicer Cross, thank you.
Well, and those have already been... I mean, there's already... They're already zoned and ready.
No, I understand that, but...
Right.
But so was Cuthbert.
And that, yeah.
Well, it wasn't... Yeah, it wasn't.
And the interesting thing is that that's been open for so long that when it starts to...
Yeah, but let's say you're going to put hotels along in order to serve, you know, the demand or something from ConocoPhillips, for instance. I think people have a lot to say about what those look like and...
We've had several meetings with the...
Strip clubs, too.
Representatives of ConocoPhillips.
Houston.
And shown them the Town Center vision that was drafted, and they like the housing piece of it more than anything because they think it's something that their potential workforce would... Because it's close to the campus, and it's not your standard single-family home, and so they've expressed interest in that in the meetings we've had with them, but it wasn't until recently that they announced their plans for the property, so... But we've met with them on several occasions, and I'm sure it continues to meet with them as they move forward.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about necessarily meeting with ConocoPhillips directly. I think just understanding what the impact of that project is going to have on Superior.
Well, they already... Well, what was announced today, they already talked about impacts as far as widening roads. McCaslin was mentioned in there, and so it's just going to have impact.
And they're very open. I mean, I've not met with them at a business leads group, so I mean, they are... If we want them to come and chat with us and tell us what's going on, just establish a relationship. I mean, they seem to be really open to doing that, so I wouldn't... Will that help?
Yes, they've been good about it.
So, what does that mean for the work plan?
Well, I'm open to suggestions here. I mean, I think that if we are... If we're sort of looking at an all-encompassing, you know, land use economic development plan that, you know, then... Or a study at least, then it should include all of those pieces, right? So, maybe that's...
And so, how do we... So, what do we put as a number on the paper?
Well, you had already on here to, like, get familiar with the impacts of ConocoPhillips. That would start by having a thorough presentation probably of what this thing is all about rather than everyone's getting snippets out of the newspaper.
Right, exactly. That would be...
So, you got to start with basic plan. I mean, Bob probably, you know, more than anybody. If you've had a conversation about their plans with them, and Matt knows much more. So, that would be helpful.
Have they gotten to a point of their own concept plan?
Well, I haven't seen a concept plan.
I know they'd hired the architect and planners in the last... Sometime in the last nine months or so.
They presented something to Lewisville yesterday or two days ago.
Yeah, there was a proposal. I don't know what it was. I don't know if it was a concept plan or not.
Well, it talked about a hotel, a rec center, and so, like, helipad and something else were the first things that were going to go in.
Right, they must have some overall scheme, and otherwise they wouldn't be just plunked in. Wouldn't know where they were going to plump these things down necessarily.
Yeah.
So, there's obviously some coherency already that they've got in mind. Pretty nice to know what that was.
Yeah, we would... I would say that would be a good first step, that we understand it and have... Either they're willing to or someone's willing to do the research to do a presentation about what they've got going, what their concept plan is. It would be very interesting information for us.
Yeah, and what they're doing, what they're generating, and really, and how they're going to accommodate that generation of whatever it is versus not, you know? What do they need to do? What... You know, why are they, for instance, need to deal with McCaslin? Well, that would be an interesting question.
Yeah.
Because McCaslin takes... Oh, yeah, well, I don't know.
Doesn't really... Yeah, doesn't drive traffic that way. Might bring somebody, people, in that are living in a...
But people hitting off of McCaslin will go with Dillon Road or whatever to get there, right?
Right, so you widen the bridge, you widen that side of McCaslin, and you widen Dillon.
Well, but again, I think the question that still comes up to me, what kind of infrastructure has to be fundamentally different than when you had 3,000 and 4,000 people commuting to that site in past years? Why would there all of a sudden have to be new infrastructure activities?
Well, again, it's not 3,000 or 4,000 people. They're talking about...
Seven.
Seven to 10,000 at any more time.
Yeah, but not till 2033.
I see, okay.
So, but also, you know, it was pretty grossly inadequate. At the height of Storage Tech's employment there, Dillon Road was horrible at rush hour in both directions, both coming to the highway and going to 95th Street from the back entrance.
Right, and those have been improved.
88th Street was horrible.
Those have been improved since then and...
Not 88th Street, and not...
Well, you had a better bridge.
The bridge has improved.
Yeah, but that's only marginally better.
Yeah.
In fact, the bridge isn't affected because it's south of where Storage... The ConocoPhillips site dumps into 88th Street. So, if you're coming from the backside of ConocoPhillips and you're headed to Dillon Road, you don't go over the bridge.
Right, right, yeah.
Nothing has changed on that road between ConocoPhillips and the Dillon Road entrance, and then very little has changed, although they've made it capable of being wider.
Yeah, and expanded a hospital.
To work in that direction.
Yeah, they've made it possible to be wider on Dillon Road, but not... And, you know, none of that is in our purview, anyway.
Right, right, it's there.
None of it is, because it's all on the other side of the highway. So, but, you know, does 88th need to be wider coming into Superior, and if so...
Well, that's what I was going to say. What makes you think it's not going to come? Some impact from the south. I assume it's all coming out of Dillon.
Yeah.
I think they can see that, too.
So, but if that's the case, where do they get the land? Where do we get the land to widen that road? Because the whole... There's not a lot of space.
Wow. Can I propose a work plan item?
Sure.
So, I put... And we can tweak this, but focus on the impacts and opportunities from the Conoco... From the ConocoPhillips development for the town as relates to the Town Center, traffic access, and other parcels to be developed by proactively monitoring the progress and discussing the planning impacts of the town.
There it is.
Sure.
I mean, I think that's all that's going to happen in the next year. Just let's keep an eye on it.
Let's understand it.
Let's understand it, let's bring things up as they appear to be important. So, do you want to read that again, Fred? Or do I...
Just email it.
Can we just email that to you, Matt?
That'd be great.
You can tweak this to whatever. So, it sounds a little better, but it's close.
Well, okay, I think that's all... That's encompassing.
Yeah.
Matt, is it your understanding, trying to make this thing self-sustaining, the whole development, so that they don't really impact anything else as if they're not...
Yeah, it's going to be difficult to do, but that's...
Yeah.
I mean, that's the whole purpose of the campus, really.
Originally, they were talking about eating, not having... Getting their cars to go eat.
Right, yeah, that's why they have hotel on site.
Some of it was going to be that they don't expect it to be a big impact, a big bonus to a lot of the surrounding businesses and stuff because they were going to have so much on their campus.
Yeah, but, you know, everybody gets... You can only eat at the same five restaurants.
Oh, I agree.
Well, not if you put public transportation in it, just funnels people over here to Lewisville and out into Lewis... I mean, truly, Superior and Lewisville, and give people an easy way to get out and back.
I say we give them all bicycles and make them ride their own business.
Even in the wintertime, huh?
Yeah.
You put chains on.
They could snowshoe that one.
For cross country skis and place the bikes.
Hey, just a big black wall.
Okay. So, that's... That would be, you know, item four, right?
Yeah.
And then, do we want to include 76th Street?
76th Street.
So?
Do you want to do any other... I mean, do you want to make that a little more encompassing and just talk about the smaller undeveloped parcels, which will be 76th Street?
What's the goal for doing that? What's the goal for talking about what 76th Street, for instance? I mean, so we say we want, as a hypothetical, body shops and car dealerships, right? I'm just using it as a specific use, right? So, that's what we plan to put there. But isn't it going to... I mean, this is... We've gone running around with this over the years. Isn't it going to be the market that dictates what's going to work there?
Doesn't matter what we say until somebody writes up what they think will work and brings it to us.
Well, and the landowners are still fragmented to some degree, I think, there, and yeah.
So, is there... So, does it make sense that we do something like bring the landowners together, and so, you know, how do we do that? How do we achieve that without an active developer on the scene?
Right.
Well, that's where I think your economic development plan comes into play, and I mean, I know the town is proactively looking for people...
Well, we can come up with general development guidelines of what we'd like to see there as far as.
Well, isn't that what the comprehensive plan does?
Well, we had a prior comprehensive plan and people kept trotting in things that had almost nothing to do with the comprehensive plan.
That's because they're buying what they think would work, like we said. So you can do all the homework you wanna do. So you have a builder coming forward, you've just wasted all your time doing the homework.
Well, I, I think we'd sort of missed our opportunity to some degree on seventy-sixth Street, because to, to plan that entire site that was, that would be functional for something like Guardian, instead we ended up plunking it down on, on, you know, on the.
One parcel.
One parcel that.
It could have been.
That sort of bifurcated the site, yeah, exactly, and I, so.
I agree.
And it's still, you know, it's still somewhat less desirable because of the C dot facility over there. And, you know, if you could, if you could theoretically relocate that, then you might have a little bit nicer parcel that had highway exposure and things like that, but instead we have a dome full of sand, right?
Well, and that is a relocatable thing. You just have to find the place to relocate it to.
So we've been talking about traffic issues in that whole part of town all along, everything I've seen.
Well, that's why the different, the kind of use, I mean, like a Guardian, that use is actually good. Yeah, the low, the low impact was one of the big pluses of it. I mean, in many ways, it's, it's a very solid development. It, it was just kind of unfortunate that if you had to figure out the different placements, that that was maybe not optimal regarding some of the other landowners there, so. But yeah, tho- those kinds of developments which will bring something different and diversify our economy and, given the location, have relatively low traffic impacts, those are the kinds of things that we would be looking for.
So then the line item on the, on the workflow shouldn't, or the work plan shouldn't be, look at seventy-sixth Street. The line item should be developing economic development plan.
Yeah, that would be the precursor.
We've been asked not to do that, so.
Well, we put it on the list last year and the town board shot it down.
On the list again?
Yeah.
Right.
Certainly won't be for us not asking to do it.
So, so five should be economic development plan. And, and then five A could be consideration of valuable parcels versus whatever.
Would we, would, so, I will say the Chamber of Commerce is equally as interested in economic development as we probably are, and maybe a combined effort might be worth proposing and may get some more attention.
I think the Chamber's budget got.
Which I know you'd love to work with Heather.
I think the Chamber's budget got pretty severely, or not severely, but substantially.
No, it got, no, sorry, it was.
Was reinstated?
It was a thousand dollar reduction over the next five years.
It was retained.
On a fifteen thousand dollar budget, so.
But, I mean, the, the development of our economy is going to improve the Chamber. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's their mission and the more people we get in.
They should be working together.
Well, we should be, and we, yeah, so that's what I was proposing, maybe a possible way to approach the economic development plans rather than the planning commission work plan. Put it as a joint effort with the, with the Chamber of Commerce.
The more minds, the better.
Just get some really good, sharp minds on the plan.
Oh, we need sharp minds for that? Scratch that.
Yeah, I mean, not speaking for the Chamber, even though I'm close to them.
Close connections.
Close connections there, but we could certainly propose it, put it on the list and see where it goes.
I'll mention it the next Chamber board meeting, so.
I'll revise this and send it out tomorrow. Everybody can look at it.
All right. Okay, anything else on the work plan, anyone? Any other suggestions? Okay. Let's see, we are moving on to the next item, discussion of the Superior Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen, Land Use Code. I printed it and then I, because I told Phil, or I didn't respond to Phil, so I needed it, but, so, do you have an extract? That'd be great. Printed and left it on my desk.
Is everybody okay with us emailing those out when it's easy to email out rather than delivering? I'd like to do five copies too, if you, if you want them.
I like having a copy here to look at.
Okay.
And not having to expend my printing resources is fine, but getting it on a computer is fine in that regard, when it's small.
Okay. So, we were scheduled to review four articles tonight, articles eleven through fourteen, I believe. We've gone ahead and Fred and I have listed this, in going through our review, we thought were the significant changes on the proposed document, which we've listed for your review, and we can go, I can read those one by one if you want, or if you wanna read them either way, but. And then any others that we might have missed, that the planning commission fills as the significant change that they'd like to discuss or see added to any one of the lists. We start out with Article eleven of the proposed revised code, which is referred back to Article twenty-three of the current code regarding site development plans and building permits. Item one within that article is language, we, language regarding exemptions was separated out at its own, out to its own section and plot land requirements were included in this section. And those are found in, on the current code, Section sixteen five oh one B and sixteen five oh one E.
Matt, I had a question about that.
Yeah.
Is plot plan requirements under the heading exemption didn't really make sense to me. I mean, I could see the subsection A looks like an exemption, but plot plan requirements didn't look like an exemption. It looked like more of a procedure or a submittal requirement.
Well, so plot plan is basically a term that's used with filing your building permit for a single-family or duplex residence, which is like you can show your house on your lot and your garage.
Okay.
That's what it is. It's a site plan. It's called, commonly called a plot plan in the building permit process.
How come it, how come?
You're saying not under exemptions.
Yeah, why does it fall under the exemptions?
That's the question.
Well, why? Because it, um, under the sort of zoning parlance in, let's say, a residential, residential, single-family unit is a use by right in the zone district, the idea is not to make the whole building permit process ownerless for a landowner who wants to build a house or a duplex. But, once you go beyond that to multifamily or commercial, you end up in a, to a site plan, a site development plan, which is quite a bit more elaborate. That's basically it. They come in there with a little plot plan, shows how they're meeting the zoning requirements, where the foundation is, you know, measured and surveyed out, and then the building, and the main review is the building, and to make sure that it fits within the setbacks, and that's about it. And it, so it makes it less.
So you're saying that it's, that the plot plan is an exemption to the?
It's, in other words, you don't have to a site development plan for.
A small, single family home.
All you have to do is a plot plan.
Yeah, and it's just a, a drawing that's scaled and all that.
No, I understand that, but again, I just, I'm, I'm, Clint, it's, how do you?
Could be eight and a half by left.
I know.
Simple sketch.
I just don't understand why it comes under exemptions, because it's an exemption from what?
From having to do a site development.
Okay, okay.
And one of the things you gotta kind of remember here is site development plan is, 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 is almost like a final development plan in a PD, but if you're in a zone district up here like BC, you gotta do a site development plan because you're a non-residential use, and that means a full-blown site plan. So that's why this language is in there, it's picking up the fact that we do have developments in our standard zone districts, basically.
Are we okay with that one? Everyone? Okay?
Item two, under Article eleven is the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. We changed the expiration date for a site development plan from twelve months to eighteen months. And the dot there is just some additional time. I mean, we have eighteen months for final, preliminary development plans, and so.
And I assume a PD would, could have its own set of, its own time limit set?
Well, it's got a little different time limit, uh, it's got a little different time limit.
That's what he said.
PD, you know, the zoning part and FDP part, isn't that right, Matt? It's a little different. It's actually six months more, right? Twenty-four months.
Yeah, twenty-four months, no, you did that last week.
That's right. Did we? Okay. Yeah, are we good with that, anyone? Got a problem with that?
Yeah, I think given the economic environment that we're in, it makes sense to give people time to go well.
Item three, we've moved submittal requirements for site development plans. This is where we, in the current code, submittal requirements were in the back, so we've now moved them to the section that they actually address, so it's easier to find.
That's fine.
I have a question about that, or? Item number eight, it says improvement, so under sixteen eleven forty, item number eight, it says improvement, improvements agreement and performance guarantee is applicable. But in the original code, it says public improvements, so I'm wondering if you should have the word public improvements.
Uh, well, sometimes while improvement agreements can also include private improvements, so that's why that public was taken out.
You may have to bond landscaping if you're putting, finishing your development at a certain time of year, you know, you gotta.
Okay. Right, if it's winter time, you don't wanna be putting inside trees and stuff, so.
I just wondered if it was important that the word public was in there, or if it was not in there, if it would somehow give somebody a loophole to that.
Yeah, it's a little more general, so it'd apply to public as well, private improvements, the way they're guaranteeing.
Okay, that's better, good, better script.
Procedures for, item four, procedures for the site development plan. This language has been, it just simply references the news, the thresholds that are listed in sixteen two ninety, which is, sixteen two ninety is the. Sixteen two ninety is the modifications, that's, you know, where we went through that discussion last time about what represents a major modification rather than a minor modification, which we'll discuss once we get through the full review and decide.
That was something we polled.
Yeah, that was polled, exactly.
So do we need to specifically poll this one as well?
Yeah.
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 Controversial, yeah.
Okay, so let's put that on the list.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on to Article twelve, which is vested rights. This is Article twenty-seven of the current code. So we can see that. Item one, we, in the current code, we didn't have a definition for vested property rights, so we went ahead and the attorneys added that definition. Is everyone clear on what vested is all about? Just generally, vesting, vesting just, vesting occurs basically at the tail end, unless you have a final flat and all you're doing is a subdivision, you can vest a final flat. But otherwise, it's things like a site, site development plan, or a final development plan. At the very end of the process, they can vest that. And state law allows developers to do that through the vesting regulations of the town that was authorized by state law. And that, once that thing is approved, you got a thirty-day window. Once, after approval, if there's no objection, then if they've asked for vesting, then they're guaranteed that they can do their development for three years, that three-year window. The vesting period can be increased, you know, I think, by the town, but anyway, that, it was because vesting was originated basically by the developers trying to help guarantee that once they got something approved, that they were able to go ahead and build it and didn't have to worry about getting blindsided with, you know, a petition and everything else. So they're immune from all of that, once you go through that thirty-day window after the approval. If they requested vested rights, a public hearing, and it's been approved and so on. That's in general what vesting is all about. And it's at the option of the developers to ask for vesting of a site development plan, a final development plan, or a final flat. We do not vest zoning, we do not, you know, none of that. It's all at the, at the end, the time they're gonna build, basically. Not at the time they're speculating or whatever. Okay, then in general, that's what it is.
Okay. Are we okay with number one?
I'm sorry?
Item two, language regarding procedures, has it added?
It has, and that's just further clarification as far as the process for them to make the request to the town and going through the planning commission and board trustees. And, you know, they're going tandem with the file development plan or the site development plan. These two things are going in tandem with each other, so they're both approved, they're both approved, approved at the same time. Unless they forget and want it later, they can come back and request it and go, then you'd have to go through what we, I don't think we ever had to do that. With anybody, because we usually, the staff, we cleared it up with them in the beginning, if you wanna do this or don't you wanna do it, just to be frank, is what we do.
Okay. Everybody good? Number three, days an applicant must submit a request for approval is increased from twenty to thirty days.
Yeah, with the public notice ask be given twenty days is kind of the close, so additional times needed, in our opinion.
They just have to submit the request within thirty days?
Right.
Does the town then, define the time the town has to respond?
To the request?
Yeah.
I, there's, I don't believe they're city-specific.
We don't respond, I mean, this, you know, it goes through the process, the responses is either approved or not approved.
Right, but is there a time?
The process, there, from the time we receive the request, there's no language that I'm aware of that requires us to respond within a certain time.
Okay. Okay. Good with that? Everyone, anyone? Four, the conditions section has been revised to clarify the conditions for approval or amendment of a site-specific development plan and vested rights. Okay.
Maybe just to clarify a little bit, is that when we talk about the terms of vesting, the state law talks about a thing called a site-specific development plan, okay? So, a site-specific development plan in the town superior is a final flat, final development plan, or a site development plan. But the vesting language in state law uses that other term.
Uses site-specific.
Site-specific, that's where this SDP comes from. That's all, it's the same thing, it's all the same. And I think the attorneys added these conditions in, didn't they not? I mean, they, they felt that, and it doesn't show up in red, but it was added, that's their, their language. Because they felt that needed to be, they wanted to have those conditions in there. Because it's, I think there's some language in state law that talks about these things, so they wanted to respond to that. so they wanted to respond to that.
Just from a typo standpoint, you use "an" S, SDP sometimes, and "a", SSDP sometimes, it should be "a", I believe.
It should be "a".
And you've got, so on page 83, at the bottom of the definitions, you use "an", on C, let's see, on 161240C, you use "an"...
And on "a" too.
And on "a", you use "an", B, you use "of".
Yeah.
I probably ought to just have a little...
I think you can go with either one.
Well, you should do one or the other, but I think it's...
He's consistent.
Technically, it's "a", yeah, because it's, "an" is prior to a "of".
"an", so it's, yeah, that doesn't sound right.
But it sounds like it's a, when you said the letter "s", you wrote the "b", so it sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
So tell the attorney to get his act together.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good there, item four. Moving on, Article 13, dedications of public improvements. Item one, under the major public improvement section, reference to review and comment by the planning commission has been removed. Eh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, why would we do that?
Because it, what they're saying, the justification they're making is that it reflects what the board is doing now. But there is no good reason, right now, right now, the board, with this language in the code the way it is, the board is in violation of the terms of its agreement or its functioning with the planning commission, whatever that means. Since we serve at the, at the...
At the pleasure of the...
At the pleasure of the board, it doesn't really mean much, but, you know, on the other hand, the planning commission, not the board, owns the land use code.
Right.
So, so we have powers that are granted by the state as the planning commission, and one of them is to review and comment on capital improvement projects, and I think it's a stupid idea to remove that.
Yeah, I'm not talking legally, I'm talking about practically.
Oh, I think it's a stupid idea to remove that language.
Right. I mean, practically, why wouldn't you refer a major public improvement to the planning commission?
Because it slows, well, and the argument will be made that it slows the project down and, and developers are needing to be watchdogged by the town, but the, the town has the town's best interest at heart.
But these aren't, these aren't necessarily developers, these are public improvement.
That's what I'm telling you.
Yeah, that's what he said.
That's what I'm saying. The argument will be made that whereas a developer will come in with the developer's best interest at heart, the town has the town's best interest at heart, and whereas the developer, who has the developer's best interest at heart, needs to be watchdogged by the planning commission, the town, because it has the town's best interest at heart, does not. That's the argument that will be made, but I think it's a load of hootie.
I think there's a couple I missed.
Just one more, you know, if you, if you don't want citizen advisory input, then let's just disband the boards and commissions.
Okay.
I'll say how much to you. You know what I'm saying, is that there's a certain amount of expertise that comes from those of us that sit on the planning commission.
Well, that and the fact that you have another set of eyes and ears and expertise, spending hours debating and fleshing things out, that maybe at the board level, they don't have that kind of time. And they could elect to just keep it on the consent agenda and just vote it in without the, the proper discussion, but for us, that is, that is what we do.
And it also provides another opportunity for citizen input.
Yeah.
Sure, absolutely.
Another level.
Right, and that's, that's the biggest issue, I think, is, you know, are these public improvements considered improvements by the public?
Right.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I think it's a bad idea to remove that language.
Well, so we could pull it, or we could just revert it back to the existing language? If you feel...
So was that a request by the town board to, I mean, is that...
No, no, it's just something when we go through the... That was the attorneys, that was the attorneys making the code fit the current practice.
I see.
Right?
Yep.
So what we should do is send a message to the board that that's improper use of their...
Powers.
Powers.
Why don't we just leave it?
It's improper use of the attorney that they're not paying for.
Who's not paying?
Why don't we just revert it back to the original language?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm fine reverting to the original language.
Me too.
All right.
I'm not sure that, I guess I'm, I'm not convinced that that's necessarily the board's position, anyway, that they don't want the planning commission to review major public improvements.
Well, you'll have a new one in April, partly, it might all change anyway.
Yeah, I'll have it, I think, yeah, we'll have some different faces on the board in April, for sure, but you'll have one for sure in December, well, more likely, but, you know, it's been...
Rosenfeld resigned, so there's no...
Oh, he did?
Yeah. One of those letters, do?
I'm sorry?
One of the letters of...
Uh, December 2nd, or something. And I'll, I'll cover that here at the end.
Okay.
There's times where the board, when we're discussing a capital project, has said, let's get planning commissions, and then there's other times where they haven't, so it's, it's...
When's the last time they did?
I guess the roundabout?
Nope.
Nope.
Rock Creek Parkway? The Rock Creek Parkway Roundabout?
Maybe the Rock Creek Parkway, oh, okay, I was thinking of the McCaslin Roundabout.
Yeah, the McCaslin Roundabout.
No, we, we got it after, we got it after.
It came out where it was 95% done.
It was an update, it was a, for your information.
It was...
This is what we're doing.
It was an FYI.
I mean, they, they had made the policy decision to go with the roundabout at the intersection.
Right, and when we saw it, it was 90% designed and already approved and going to be installed. We never saw plans.
I think the bulldozer...
Well, yeah, I know, I'm sure. And that's how typically the projects come through, except for at the concept level. You know, when we do final development plans at the marketplace, they're, no, 500%...
Do we need to send a different message? I mean, if the current code didn't get that roundabout in front of us, then...
Yeah.
At what's...
Do we actually need to not revert back to the old, but change it to something a little stronger?
Further modified, so...
Well, the Coal Creek Drive project was, that was, the planning commission had a lot of input on that, and the design, and went back and forth, and all that, so there was a lot of iteration on that one. But that was some time ago.
Maybe that's what they didn't want to do.
For my tenure.
The Rock Creek Roundabout.
We didn't even look at the Rock Creek Roundabout very hard.
No, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, that was...
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right.
We spent some good time on that one.
The signs, the sidewalks, I mean, the crossings, everything.
Right.
The other benefit to not just simply reverting it back to the original language is, then it'll show up in the board's meeting discussions with regard to this review, as far as what was discussed at the planning commission meeting and what, what the outcome for this particular item was. To emphasize your point.
I think the, yeah, the language should say that the capital improvement project should come at the time of conception.
Before the planning commission.
To the planning commission.
For review.
As part of a planning process, as opposed to a review and comment.
Well, at some point, you've got to have something to show us.
Post-plan.
Right? Has to be some, has to be some level of...
Preliminary documentation.
Preliminary documentation or something, to show the planning commission to be able to comment on it, because in some cases, you know...
It's purely just conceptual.
So then, preliminary, okay, sorry.
Whatever, that's what I'm saying.
You're picking at nits.
Am I?
Well, but I would have, so like the McCaslin Roundabout, what has become the McCaslin Roundabout, what if there had just been something brought to the planning commission that said, we believe we have an issue at this intersection, and what are some of the ideas in terms of traffic flow, traffic lighting, or whatever, that, that could or should be explored at this intersection?
Well, that's the traffic engineer's fore, isn't it?
Okay.
I, I mean, to some point, you're going to take certain issues and turn them over to the experts, right?
Well, but it, but as we all say, the, the decision was already made, that it was going to be a roundabout, and there was no other discussion on any other option.
What's the other info?
I mean, I guess the point was that we, we saw the bid documents, essentially, so, which means there was very little opportunity to make any changes.
None.
Little, a little to none, right?
But that was because the county was involved in some kind of stimulus, right?
No, 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 no.
No?
Not, just with the adjacent...
The county's involved in creating a trailhead.
Yeah, just a laser track.
The county, the county paid for that roundabout, right?
Right.
That was a county-funded roundabout.
It's a county-funded project.
It was a town superior planning process, though, but it was a county-funded, so...
Right.
It was a county-funded roundabout.
Why isn't it done? It's still not done.
Yeah, there were some issues, I forget, they, you know, they ran into some problems.
I would say this, if you watch a 18-wheeler try to go through there...
That's fun. That's spanky fun, right there.
It's, it's not quite as smooth as the, as they described it after we asked the question many times during, during that.
There's no way that...
During our comment period, we, we discussed, this looks kind of small for a big truck, and sure enough, it's, looks too, when you see a truck go through there, they're jumping curves and...
Well, they're supposed to jump the curve.
They're supposed to jump the center, the middle curve.
They're not supposed to run, they're not supposed to run the back tires of the truck through the landscaping.
Well, they're not supposed to, they're not supposed to then hit the front tires on the outside curves.
Right, where the pedestrians are standing waiting to cross you.
Just so you know.
Subject for expansions, what's going to happen.
There's no room to expand, you can't expand.
So, they're going to come in off Colton from the...
So looking at 16526 in the old code, I mean, it basically says that all major public improvements of the town shall be reviewed, and a decision rendered by the board of trustees following review and comment by town staff and review and comment at a public hearing by the planning commission. So a decision shouldn't be rendered, according to this, right?
Yeah, I think the biggest, the biggest reason to have it is for the, for there to be a public hearing in front of the planning commission.
Does this language take care of that? I mean, I understand that they have the, I mean, certainly they have the authority to say, we're going to put a roundabout here, I mean, that's, I mean, it's not necessarily, this isn't saying that we can decide what the intersection improvement's going to be, because they may decide that the intersection, right, that's a policy decision that there's going to be an intersection improvement, we're going to do a roundabout, but...
We're just going to try to make the design and the...
Right, but now at that point, it, it becomes a planning issue and...
Right. Once you've determined, and see, that's what, that, that's the step that got missed last time. They said, we're going to put a roundabout in, and said, go design this, and then, oh, by the way, maybe the planning commission should see it, and so, the day before they sent out the bid documents to the various RFP folk, right, they showed it to us.
Well, I mean, the opportunity should be there, I mean, even if we're reviewing a roundabout, it doesn't mean we don't look at it and say, this roundabout can't work the way it's being proposed, it is too small.
Right.
And then if it gets into, we don't have enough land to make it big enough, then it should go back, and we have some, some other decision needs to be made about what you're going to do at this intersection.
Well, and that's the part that got, I think, grossly missed.
Well, then, did we violate our land use of 16526? Does it stand right now?
Probably.
Because, was the decision already made prior to us?
Yes. It was made and approved in October of last year.
Then, because this clearly says that...
Well, I don't know what the date was, I thought it was, I thought it was an '09 decision, but anyway, it's just a good example of...
Right, so...
Do we need to do anything, or is this language fine?
Well, to Matt's point, I think the question, should we pull it for further discussion?
Yes, pull it for further discussion.
The county wasn't telling us.
Because, even if all we do is revert later, if we pull it for further discussion, at least...
But are we recommending that it remain the same and be pulled, you know, we're going to put that, put the two things in there which says, we want it to be...
I think we're still debating whether it should be the same or not, that's why we're going to pull it.
All right.
Right?
Fair enough.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Does it work for you?
Everybody good with that?
This side of the table's good.
Good with pulling that for later discussion?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, and then item two, the sub-itemizing in section 1613-50 should be letters and not numbered, the consistent with document format.
Yeah.
I am pulling this one.
You are? She missed.
Okay?
Yeah. Now, if you see.
Okay, Article nine, recreational facilities and open space, Article 25 of the current code, the section regarding HOAs is not required and was deleted, this is covered by state law.
Do you not see that language?
Yeah.
This is 14.
This is 14.
So for maintenance and control of common areas, yeah, why?
So why is it being pulled?
It's not needed.
Covered by state law.
Okay, but, so then what do we, do we quote the state law in the, in the code?
Well, yeah, we can do that.
Well...
We're a statutory town, so if it's not in our code, it refers back to the state code, statute.
Well, yeah, but, okay.
Is that how we're approaching other things that are in the state code, we're not putting it in?
Yeah, actually, attorneys are putting it in.
I think that's really the most important, is how, that we're being consistent.
Okay.
And we have two choices, one, right, we either repeat the state code, which means we have to keep our code up, if the state changes, we have to make sure ours changes, right? Or we just leave it out and have it back and not have to worry about it.
Or just say state, or see state code, right.
Okay.
I don't even think, I don't even think they're doing that, I think they're just leaving it out.
I'm seeing that the rest of it's...
Right.
By default. It's like a default.
Because then you have a third way to do it, which is wherever it's applicable, say see state code.
I'm fine leaving.
I'm fine leaving.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay? Okay?
The rest of that article is pretty much the same.
Okay.
We had one additional thing on the usable open space, and they, we just inserted on subsection, should be, let's see, so 161460, I'm sorry, just development standards for usable open space, subsection C, we added just that wording there for, to clarify the patrol, the patrol quarters.
So I have a question about this whole thing, because this is something that has been very bothersome to me since I moved to Superior.
Mm-hmm.
Rock Creek is a home association.
It has one, yes.
It has a home association, and it's got various design elements with regard to extensive fencing and this and that, and I'm trying to understand how, I don't live in Rock Creek, I'm not part of that home association, I don't have a home that has the kinds of fencing and special paths and all that, so how is it that I have ended up through this landscape fee by the town, how have I ended up paying a disproportionate share, given very small elements of the same things, fencing and landscaping, and how is it that people in Sagamore, who have very, very small portions per the 188 households, how is it that we end up really having our dollars go up and, and take care of those elements in Rock Creek?
I think the short and obvious answer is 'cause...
Yeah, well, so I'm...
Most fencing in Rock Creek, though, is the responsibility of the homeowner.
I, my understanding is, and maybe you can help clarify this, because my understanding was that, like, the fencing that would occur between homes would be the homeowner's responsibilities, but...
You put a, but, open space or something?
Right, like, you have extensive...
No, it's the responsibility of the homeowner.
The inside of the fence is, but the outside of the fence is the responsibility of the town.
The homeowner.
Mine's painted by volunteers, by the work, what is it, the youth...
Youth corps.
Yeah.
I haven't seen those volunteers in Sagamore.
The outside of mine.
They did paint them a couple years ago.
I haven't seen, those are pretty bad paint jobs, then, because I haven't seen it painted for years. I, I guess, I'm looking at this, and I, I believe in Superior, the lines have really been blurred, and, and it, it's been put out there as a landscape fee that, that per household, it is, given that you go from a medium density, highway dense, you know, Sagamore, and you, you have the same charge per household as a home that has expansive fencing and huge amounts of town-maintained, well, has become town-maintained landscaping. I mean, when I first came to this town, you go up the hill, you see a big thing that says Rock Creek, so if you look, that, your belief is, this is what the landscape, this landscaping and all this is part of what Rock Creek covers and all that, and so I'm still trying to understand the, the lines that got blurred, that, that said, and Sagamore will now pay the same $30 a month that a million-dollar home in Rock Creek will pay, that mostly will pay for...
It's 'cause you get to use the pool.
Well, right, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand it, because it, it seems like I see things that are written, and had I read that, I would've been led to believe that Rock Creek is Rock Creek, and I'm living in a, an area that is not a home association, and I've ended up paying for, at the same rate as a million-dollar house up, up in that neighborhood.
Thank you, by the way.
For those things. You're welcome. It's, it's, I'm glad someone appreciates it, because, you know, so it's, it's just a very weird thing that we have this thing about homeowners, but in essence, we've got a very blurred situation, and somehow Sagamore got sucked into a fee that really is, is for Rock Creek. You know, how do you resolve it? I don't know, but I, I don't feel it's fair the way it is. And, and I think the lines got blurred.
As soon as construction starts, and it's not...
So does that need, you know, I, I don't understand the, the language, because it seems like...
But the landscape fee's not addressed in the land use code.
No.
In fact, the landscape fee is a policy question to be directed at the town board, and for us to discuss it is the same as us, you know, licking our fingers and sticking them in our ears.
Okay.
And, and really, the question is, why is the landscape fee a fee at all? Why is it not a property tax?
I, I, I've asked that question for years. Exactly, I've asked the same question for years.
Right, and, and the, there's...
And it would become proportional to the size of a home, size of property.
You should, good floral. Yeah. Because you, you...
You're probably all over this stuff. Hey, because my fence looks good, your property value is upheld. That's all I can say.
Um, okay. So, do you wanna review just quickly the items that we pulled?
Yeah, the, so, major public improvements.
Yep.
Article 11. And then under Article 11, the supplemental procedures for a site development plan, which referenced the distinction between a major amendment and a minor amendment, referenced that.
Right, the reason we pulled that part is because the other part has to get worked.
Right.
Okay?
So just those two items.
Okay, so those will be added to the list?
And we had no questions for the attorney, right?
No question for the attorney.
Not today.
Not today.
So a question for the commission is, do we wanna continue reviewing, you know, two, two to four articles at a time? Or do you wanna increase that?
As opposed to what, grinding?
No, I, this is the right amount, I think. I mean, I think if we didn't have the discussion on the work plan, we could've gotten through another one or two sections tonight, but...
Yeah, these were easy, so...
These were relatively easy.
And then...
Are we on track to get it done to whoever said mine we might be working to if any?
Yeah.
That's all right, though.
Based on what, we had three meetings.
We did four tonight. If you thumb through these, we might be able to get through five to get to signs, and sign is a walk, because we've already done that.
We did that last year.
So, so let's, Matt and I'll look at that, see if we can't knock off five of them for the next time.
Is that, is that what's remaining?
What?
Yeah. The five remaining?
No, no, no. There's thirty...
There's a bunch more, right?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
But, we're making a dent.
Oh, we're, we're cruising, okay.
Yeah.
How many were there to start?
Thirty-one. There are articles on the new code, I believe.
Yeah.
I think that was it.
There are...
Well, actually, I got thirty-six.
Yeah, thirty-six.
Thirty-six to start, and how many have we been through?
Well, we just got through fourteen.
Fourteen, fourteen. And we'll try to knock off five, so we'll get us to twenty...
And then we'll be halfway.
Almost a little over halfway.
Considering the delays we had, I'd say it's not bad.
And if you see...
Well, I guess, you know, procedurally, how many can you guys get through in order to prepare for a meeting?
Well, it depends what it is, because we're gonna run up against some design stuff back here, which, some of these are thicker than others.
Right. But my, my question was, can you prepare more than we might actually get through in a meeting?
Yeah, we can save the...
So if we wanted to go for an hour and a half or the full two hours or something, we could just keep grinding through?
We could think about that.
And then just stop whenever we stop and pick up?
Continuing on.
Rather than, today, we're constrained by having four, so we went through four.
Right.
But what if we could get through...
Right, if there were eight available, we might've been able to get through six.
Yeah, we might've been able to crank through eight.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Cool.
Yeah.
So, I see Fred's got it.
I say yes, and he's saying, oh my God, so...
Fred, you get paid by me.
No, I mean, it's a matter of...
Logistics.
I'd say if you can, that's great. If can't, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we can get through a fair number of them. We'll line up at least five or six of them, I think.
Well, especially, we're blocking out 120 minutes on these work sessions to, to go through that, so if we're all sort of planned in our head that we're gonna be here a couple hours, and if we can knock off eight or nine of them or something, that'd be awesome, right?
Matt, I did notice, since you brought up signs, there, there are a couple of neon fluorescent signs facing west, up Sycamore, that I didn't think we were supposed to have lighted signs going that direction. I don't know whether that's changed, but I keep meaning to, to mention it.
Where?
Uh, the nails place, and another one out in the game spot.
The backside there?
I think it is, yeah, they put these big neon...
The open?
Well, they saw the one out here on the street and thought it was okay.
Yeah. You're not allowed to have neon at all.
Okay, yeah, there's two neon signs that are up there.
Yeah, I'll take a look.
Yeah.
Where's that code enforcement office? Leave my basketball hoop alone.
The nails folks are...
They'll take care of those signs, will they?
The nails folks are really sort of suffering. We might wanna offer them, instead of just going and saying, hey, turn that damn thing off, we might wanna, I know this is a policy decision, but we might wanna offer them some other means by which to drive traffic to their otherwise suffering business. Because that's all they're trying to do is...
They're trying to keep their doors open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and so, granted, they should follow the rules, but on the other hand, we should figure out a way to help them to be able to...
Yeah, no, I, I would go with that spirit. I, I think that the risk of leaving signs like that is just more, oh, there it comes, and next thing you know, the whole row will be neon signs. You already got two, I'd be proud.
Get your money, Teddy.
Matt, I got a question.
Yeah.
Support the local businesses. What governs our code for lane closures? Like when they're doing work? Like they were doing work on the Center median, and I about ran through some cones today, 'cause a truck in front of me suddenly went like that, and there's just cones in the road and workers.
On median there today?
Yeah.
They're required to have a flag where they close a lane.
Yeah, I know that, I mean, I did a lot of roadwork in California, and I had to jump through hoops and have lighted signs and lane closure ahead, and flagman and everything else.
It's just dangerous for the workers.
And there's, there's been, it's always been a problem of mine, the way we close lanes within our town in a matter of time before somebody just gets nailed.
Let me check on that, and I'll send some out to the testing tomorrow.
Plus, when I'm driving my brand-new Mercedes out of my million-dollar house, I don't want my fenders scuffed by the dirt from the cones that I run over.
Dragging a cone down the road with you.
Yeah.
No, I just, ever since I moved here, when they run across super low plate, lane plate, it's always spattered, because I just put out four cones across the lane, and they think that's enough, and I just don't see it.
I know, yeah, I'll...
Especially on McCaslin. I mean, McCaslin Rock, the major, the major lanes where people, I mean, I wasn't driving too fast, but I see people driving way too fast, and they come up on those things with very little time to make a decision as to what to do.
Yeah.
You were driving too close.
Uh, maybe behind that big truck, too close.
I'll, I'll get something out for you.
Yeah, I just always wonder. Okay, great.
I did, just a couple of things. We received the final development plan for guardian storage, so probably be in front of the Planning Commission in January, is what we're thinking now. Rocky Mountain Fire Department is planning on expanding their Station Five off of Indiana, with two additional bays and some additional living quarters and meeting space, so that'll be coming forward probably January.
Did that bond pass, it did, right?
It did, yep, at Middlelevian Cruz Pass. And then the board vacancy.
Who's that all?
Trustee Rosenfeld resigned his position effective immediately.
He's moving.
He's moving to South Denver.
Moving to the Centennial DTC.
Go to work for Comcast.
Yeah, DTC area. Is this the newspaper?
I did, I didn't see it.
It was in the paper, too, man. Did you not read?
Certainly not.
So, um...
I got a call.
The board is, we have elections in April, so instead of holding a special election, the board decided to appoint somebody, so they've asked for interested individuals to submit a cover letter and resume to the town by December 2nd, and then they get to hold interviews on December 7th, and probably appoint somebody on December 14th. So, if you're interested.
Lots of able-bodied sitting at this table. One of them is not me, so you know.
Oh, and then, Phyllis was kind enough to do the minutes for the Ochsner hearings that we had. And they're lengthy, and they'll be going to the board for, so they can see the discussion that went on at the Planning Commission level, which is, which will be good for them. But one thing that came up, where she was listening to the tape, is at times, we, in our discussions, we had a bunch of people talking, and it was probably late in the meeting, but if we could try to keep our comments speaking one at a time, that helps Phyllis give the minutes.
A couple of things that I, I noticed, and it was pretty much all me, you know, somebody's talking, somebody interrupts them, it's very hard to keep the train of thought going, and so then I back up a bit, and it was, it was really difficult. I would like to see that the chairman recognize each person.
Okay.
And as, as, I don't know if you watched the board meeting, but as the mayor does, he'll say trustee Ochsner.
Okay.
If you could do that for each person, 'cause I might not always be doing the minutes, it could be somebody else, and...
And you, they might not be able to recognize the, the voice, right?
And not that we do a lot by, by each person, but it would be nice to have that, so that everybody is not talking at once, and everybody then knows who's supposed to be talking, and also, when there's a motion, you know, if there's no...
To recognize the...
If there's people voting against it, if you just say who those people are.
Okay. I can do that.
Something that I've been noticing, 'cause I've been watching town board meetings, there's a lot of people who...
Yeah.
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 We keep saying that, you know, George keeps saying it.
We've looked at longer mics, we've looked at lapel mics, which nobody wants to wear, which I understand, because we go out of the room, you forget it's on. It's still picking up whatever you're saying.
I don't know, I kinda like them.
Or doing.
Or doing, yeah.
So, we're looking at next year, ways we can upgrade our sound system, maybe hopefully help pick up, and it could be just moving the mics closer, you know, but then they get in the way of your documents and stuff like that.
You could do a, you could do a, a soundboard in the room.
What if you did like Johnny Carter's mics?
Seriously.
That you literally put right in front of you, right?
And you can move, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think they have those at Dr. Cox. So we're looking at a number of things we can do to try to...
Makes it really, really annoying, I, I mean, the, the video quality is bad, the lighting is horrible, and then with bad sound quality, it's like, oh, I can't, not another half hour.
Well, and they, and the 2010 budget, we have money for new cameras, so...
Well, that'd be good, but just this lighting, whatever's going on with these guys, is just, it's horrible. I mean, have, have, do you guys ever watch their meetings? It's horrible, horrible.
Watch them on web streaming. But, I understand.
It's under red wire.
It's a little too much, maybe, from the back side.
It's glary. I don't know what the...
There's a couple spots right to the back wall.
I mean, even now...
Yeah, I think it's those two that bounce off of that.
So that you can see it's a bit...
Yeah, there's a wicked hot spot right in the middle of the sign.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it?
That, was it for me?
We need to add lighting on whoever's at the podium, their camera angle, so you can see him.
Yeah.
It's a good point, they have a light that kinda points that.
Yeah.
Yeah, those cameras are ten years old, twelve years old.
Yeah, but if, if all we did was spin that light to point at the podium, though?
Put a heat bulb in there, it'll help keep them down to five minutes, too. Put a heat bulb in there, it might keep them down to five minutes.
Anyway, that's...
Okay. That's it?
That's it?
Anything else?
Okay, we are adjourned.
Indeed.